Please give the word and rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Suzy, roll call phase.
Councilmember Ritzma.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Here.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Here.
Motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Discussion or changes? Sue.
Councilmember Ritzma.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Citizen discussion for items not on the agenda.
Wendy Price, Flat River Outreach Ministry's Executive Director. You all should have a couple sheets in front of you, one is a brochure, the other one is a sheet here. I'm just gonna go through the front page there. As many of you know, we are working on a capital campaign for building three buildings just down the street here. The total project cost is $1 million. We are at 2.79249. That last dollar is gonna get us over the 50 mark there. But we're really excited, so we still have a gap there of over half a million dollars, but it's closing. And we did have, just a brief update, we've talked about the possibility of brownfield tip for this project, but it doesn't appear to be really viable just due to the lower incremental tax income from that and also the large initial investment, so we will not be pursuing it. Want to draw your attention to the public campaign match challenge that we have. If we raise $125,000 by May 1st, we will receive another $50,000 for the project, so we're really excited. A little nervous, only eight weeks for that, but we're hoping to make some progress there. Next up, of course, continued fundraising. We will start work at Impact Church, the compensation cut within the same floodplain roughly in May, along with starting to move dirt down at our main site at 504 East Main. Also, May is the plan. And so our request today is just continued support from you folks, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thanks, Lenny.
Perry Beach, I reside in the city of Lowell. I have some concerns that I want to share. My biggest concern is that if the current national administration continues in the current direction, we are not going to have a democratic democracy. I voted for Trump in the 2016 election. I was looking for change. I was led to believe that Washington was corrupt and dysfunctional. I remember saying that after that election, it was a great day to be a Republican. I am so embarrassed now. The Republican Party has left me. No longer is it the party of law and order, decency, freedom. I say these things because it is obvious we aren't seeing this from the top down, but would hope we will eventually see a change in direction from the bottom up. I love the Lowell community, West Michigan, and the state of Michigan, and being a citizen of the United States. What I'm most proud of is how the community comes together to help one another in times of need and for the kindness of one's heart to make life better. The attitude in the Republican Party is, what's in it for me? As a nation, we have always looked out and supported the oppressed. My grandfather served in World War I in eight major battles in Europe. My father served in the Navy at the end of World War II. My father-in-law served in the Navy during the Korean War. They took an oath to defend the United States from all enemies, foreign and domestic. I did not serve in the military, but believe that oath is appropriate for all citizens. This last week, we saw the United States switch their support from democracy to dictatorship. World War I and World War II, Russia was an ally of the United States. It wasn't until after World War II that Russia became an adversary. Currently, Trump has put the United States in support of Putin and accused war criminal by the International War Crime Commission. Trump states that Ukraine started the war with Russia, calls Zelensky a dictator. We also hear his claims that the 2020 election was stolen and there was no insurrection. We all saw in real time as it was happening with him inciting the riot. Trump didn't improve the landscape in Washington. It appears corrupt and dysfunctional more than ever. It sickens me to see where we are headed. The United States is going to be standing alone. While some believe that is good for us, I strongly disagree. Financially, it's going to cost us to keep Americans safe. I see our defense budget having to increase dramatically when standing alone in the world. I can go on and on of the direction that the convicted felon Donald Trump is taking the United States. What I am most disappointed in is when people who know the lies and won't speak out to the lies and falsehoods, no matter what affiliation. We can certainly disagree on policies, but the lies are inexcusable. In conversations, I have heard, "I won't watch the news. I just tune out. It won't affect me. We only have four years of this." If you think Trump is going to leave after his second term voluntarily, I hope he does for the sake of the Constitution, you had better be prepared. He has already signed many executive orders that are in opposition of the Constitution. The Supreme Court has ruled that a president is immune while in the White House. Let's hope and pray that in the future, they will faithfully deliberate what our founders intended in the Constitution. Most Americans will agree that we need to cut waste and fraud along with balancing the budget. But what I see is giving tax breaks to the rich, reducing services to the less fortunate, and increasing the debt. If all these cuts are to reduce the debt, why are we going to increase the debt limit another $4 trillion? Musk is another question mark. Again, citizens need to pay attention. Doge was not created by Congress. Again, Trump has someone not bound by any ethics, cutting programs instead that were created by Congress, and it has no transparency. It appears Musk is lining his pockets further with government contracts with no oversight. Trump is now limiting the press corps. These are moves to an authoritative government. Freedom of speech is one of the founding liberties that makes this nation great. With that, I encourage all citizens to reach out to your local, county, state, and national officials and let your voice be heard. Thank you.
Thanks.
Tyler Kent, 28, Jane Ellen. I don't have a pre-written speech, but just wanted to, you know, want to congratulate some of the rest of the people. Thanks for being on board. You know, as I say, my water bill, water and sewer bill noticed something in a newsletter about sidewalk clearing within 24 hours, and now this won't be on a complaint basis, but more an active monitoring basis. Though I understand the need for people to use the sidewalks and make sure that people clear, and there's always bad actors on it, I do have concerns about using our police force to basically be sidewalk. There are many circumstances for people to not clear within exactly 24 hours, whether it's a continuous snowstorm, whether it's sub-zero temperatures, or just for the fact that they're not able to go out there and do it within an immediate timeframe, do any type of mobility issues. So I think, you know, as we move forward with this, definitely understand the need to clear the sidewalks, but I don't think we should have the police force actively trying to monitor where the sidewalk is and what state of affair it's at. This subjectively determine how much snow has been chilled, how much we think has been cleared each night, rain, snowstorm, and be just a little concerned about all that monitoring. Rather, police force be used for other activities. Plenty of them in town. I really haven't focused on that person. Thanks.
Anybody else? All right, moving on. Jim and Dennis, LCTV Endowment Fund.
Get to my item too quick. Dennis Kent, 1700 Faith Drive Lowell, Chair of the Lowell Cable TV Endowment Board. And we met, what did we meet, Jim? 21st?
On Friday.
25th, yeah, right, yeah. So we scheduled a meeting on Friday. But so we went through, we had about twice as many requests as we had funding, which is not unusual to have more requests than what we have rentable balance, but this time was quite a bit higher. So we had to kind of balance what we had with the requests. There was some that we were not able to fund at all, some were reduced, and at least one was not eligible. So maybe just go through these quick, continue agenda package. What we selected was Cable TV, fund administrative expenses from the city, by the city. Flat River Outreach asked for a very high percentage of the funding. Not this bad cause, it's actually a good cause, but we just don't have the ability to fund that, much else. So we agreed to fund half of that with the ability for them to ask again. Astronomy Association, they voluntarily reduced their request somewhat. Chamber of Commerce laptops, we think gave them what they asked for. Fire Department, data service infrastructure upgrade. Pick that, something that benefits all of the communities around here. Lowell Historical Museum, off-site storage, that was one we had funded. Again, that benefits a lot of all the communities around here. The school district, the robotics camp. We had a lot of people talking about that on our board, and that was a pretty decent project that we wanted to fund this time. Computers for the Lowell showboat, women's club pillowcases for veterans. Rotary Club kitchen renovation for the building here, which is used by, you know, the city as well as others. Equine, Equine Learning Center, reduce that one a little bit, or maybe actually probably more than a little about half for that one. And Rich's Township, it's a fairly small request, so we funded all of that. And unfortunately, we couldn't, you know, we'd like to fund everything, but we were unable to do that. Those are the projects that we're recommending to the council. Jim, do you like anything?
Oh, there's a couple things that stuck out to me that there were still two. Civil War grave sites out in the township that had never been marked or claimed or anything like that. Part of it, due to their study, they're able to find out who's there, and so they're gonna get two markers. What is that, 170 years later, finally you get the proper marking for a couple of World War, I mean, Civil War veterans up there. The other thing that stuck out to me was there were two organizations, one being the James Bean and one being the Rotary, actually took less money so that other groups could be funded. Sitting on that board for as long as I have, it's, I think it's the first time that I experienced that, that somebody said, "We will take less to give others." So that was, that was pretty good. It was some really tough times. The board had a lot of good communications back and forth, why they're in favor of this, why that. I know some of you were there. It's never an easy decision, when do we get so many requests and there's less to give? But I think the board overwhelmed, did a really good job communicating and getting that out there. And one thing I would recommend, there were a lot of people there, and I know Mike was busy that night, he couldn't be there, but I would like to make sure that if you're gonna have requests, have somebody attend to come and speak a little bit on behalf of whoever's asking for that. And we did have quite a few, but not everybody was there. Other than that, I will, along with our recommendations of what you guys had in your package tonight.
Good. Any other questions for Dennis? Tyler?
I have a couple of comments. I would, these are of a personal nature. My older daughter has had autism her entire life, and when she was younger, she did equine therapy for three years, which was hugely helpful to her. So I really appreciate the volunteers that on the board that determined these amounts, but to see 15,000 for that to continue is just super. And then also, secondly, I live in an upstairs apartment which overlooks the robotics. There are activities on Tuesday nights, and it's, I've never seen, I've never really seen more dedicated youth and involved, and so I'm very pleased to see that amount going to the robotics camps. Thank you.
And that one came across as a fun project for the ones that would be involved in these camps, so that was kind of cool.
I was driving something at the Mall of the Sea the other, last few days. They were in Light Power Building, and I kind of stalked and watched them for a little while. There was some cool stuff going on in there. And I know Light Power's done a ton to help them too.
Yes, exactly.
With that, faith in space. As I was, I think that one of the meetings I sat in, for you, Jim, at Light Power's, when they discussed.
Yep.
That seems to have been pretty successful too. You good, Eric?
Good.
You guys good? All right, with that, then I will make a motion that we approve the LCTV Endowment Fund recommendations for 2025. I'll support. Any other discussion? Sue.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkis.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ritzma.
Yes.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thanks, Jim. I want to thank the board for their time and effort and for all the work the applicants put into this.
One other thing, our packages are flawless. I know we gave this city $4,000 for administering this thing. Suzy, thank you very much for all you do.
You're welcome.
Good, thanks, Dennis.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Rich, you're up. Neighborhood traffic calming.
All right, well, following several meetings and discussions about traffic calming in the city neighborhoods, cities have began to investigate traffic calming policies from other communities to determine if there are policies in place that could be beneficial to the city of Lowell when navigating the traffic calming issues. The nice thing about municipalities, we can bank borrow cotton steel policies, so we probably won't work really well, or it seemed like it was gonna work really well for us, and we made a few modifications to it, we're presenting it here to you tonight. Some of the key elements of this policy specifies the intended traffic calming as a focus of the combination of roadway capacity, traffic speed, motorist and pedestrian safety, and livability of an airboat, which is a key component here, because we've heard a lot about livability from everybody, so I like that that had that in the policy. It allows us to implementing measures that are self-imforcing by using the laws of physics and human psychology to solve traffic, so not throwing a stop signs to resolve traffic issues in all cases. They do work, but there's other measures that we can employ too. Policy also outlines objectives of neighborhood livability, quality of life, maintaining access, citizen involvement, and efficient use of city resources. Defines policies for the implementation of traffic calming measures and lists a series of things we can implement. Layers out the process and timeline to be followed to implement the traffic calming projects. Describes the data collection methods. Provides a clear ranking method for projects, and provides a long list of potential traffic calming measures that we could implement. Also includes an evaluation method post-installation, so that we can go back and make sure that what we implement and actually works, and then gives us an opportunity if we need to remove that, we can remove it as well. So it's a little bit of a complex policy for our staff to implement, however, it does create a standard, which I think is important in this case, because we can land on a standard that we can all look to that we have to resolve traffic issues. Provides clear expectations to residents about how traffic calming requests are managed. And in this case, traffic calming can come from one of the couple of sources. It can come from a neighborhood group with a large percentage of folks asking for that traffic calming policy to be looked at, or it can come from city staff, which would include DPW or the police department. In addition, the length of time to address resident complaints may not be what residents are accustomed to, so I believe in this policy, it gives us up to a year or two to implement some of these policies. Previously, when things have come to the city council, we've resolved them very quickly with traffic signage, but again, doesn't always seem to fit the bill the best. But again, finally, this does provide a clear outline, so I think it'd be nice if the city council could take a look at this, give your comments back to myself and the manager, and then we can take it from there by tweaking it or implementing.
Does it work for everybody? Take a look at it?
Yeah.
Pretty bad?
I did read through, there's a lot of information in this which you gave us, and there's some really, I highlighted four by that I thought were really high standards that I think we could get to pretty easily and have some solutions. We have this in our ordinance, or we put it, so it's there, so.
We treat it as a policy, we probably wouldn't make it on ordinance, because an ordinance is considered a law, we just treat it as a policy.
But it would give a guideline for everybody instead of case-by-case basis and precedent being set and changed.
Be engaged in clarification about brownfields.
Yeah, to ban them.
They didn't say that.
Across the board.
Didn't say that.
I wrote it in, read my.
We gotta watch out for it, 85% of times. A bunch of years ago, the state tried to make Hudson Street, Main Street goodbye.
Yeah.
And the chief were kapaching because he hates Hudson's residential. And you notice that the speed limit was raised quicker on South Hudson, and then it didn't cut down until you got further down. So I just, Mike can service, you can verify that.
Which is why you want to be careful if you want to do a traffic study, or a speed study, because if you do it, it's a big, you gotta live with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been waiting that for years.
Yeah.
This, oh here, our main street at 25 miles an hour.
Well, the data collection's gonna help too, because even when we were all, I admittedly was supportive of that left turn light, and it has not provided the positive results I thought it was gonna. So with data collect, and that's always been a complaint of the residents, because they don't collect enough data or make enough data public at least.
Right, and to me too, like since the left turn lights started to have, there have been less crashes, more crashes, severe, I mean, I couldn't tell you because there's been studies since then.
Yeah.
Hey, they won't work.
But also, the.
Can, without the speakers, or without the sound system, can you?
Everybody.
All right. Outside voices.
Yeah. Pretend the Packers are losing, Jim, talk to that voice.
Okay.
So Chief, can you look at that intersection for us and see how many crashes were involved, how many, right, and go back as far as you can so we can do a little comparison? Because we didn't know they were putting the light up till they showed up and put it up. And it was the city of Grand Rapids that came in and did it, which I found.
They knew all the traffic.
They knew all the traffic. But I was super happy to see them there, and then within four weeks, it doesn't work for me. But do you have a timeframe that you're looking at? When would you like to hear back?
Well, that's what I was gonna request, is that we put some kind of a timeframe on this so we can get all comments back and incorporated, and then formally adopted, so if we can do that in about a month or so.
You wanna do that? First meeting in April? Does that work for everybody?
Back on the April or May agenda.
Yeah.
Formal adoption.
First meeting in April, that is good for everybody, right? To give back with questions and concerns to Rich or Mike? All right, that seems like a consensus to me, so let's move on to your side.
I have just a couple of comments. I did read through this, Rich, you did a really good job. It's easy to read, it has a lot of information. I just have to ask a couple of things. On the, on page eight, it said that for the design criteria is that the posted speed may not be more than 30 miles per hour. I'm reading that, that if the speed limit is 35 miles an hour, then these traffic calming methods shouldn't be implemented?
Yeah, and if you think about it, we only have a few roads that are 35 or higher, and that would be Main, Hudson, some of those, so we wouldn't want to implement traffic calming policies on those roads anyway, because they're not our roads. They're either MDOT or the county roads, so we couldn't do anything with them anyway. So that caveat limits it to mainly just local roads, which the city has control over.
All right, great. I just, I didn't think about local roads, the 25, and then. The second thing on page nine, this is the reasons for removal, and item two says that the identified traffic problem that the measures were to eliminate is transferred to another adjacent street or neighborhood. And I think that's one of the things that you want to do, is move traffic from the smaller streets to the more appropriate streets, for instance, Riverside traffic to Hudson. So I don't understand that item two on page nine. So we don't, we don't need to get into those details now, but I just, that just struck me, I don't understand that.
That's a good point. I think we can even clarify that and just say another local street rather than another major street or another collector's street. So we can clarify that line pretty easily.
Great, thank you.
That's the intent, right, is not to move it from Monroe to Jefferson?
Exactly.
And then institute measures on Jefferson, and then it goes to James and whatever.
Yeah, so you just push the problem around.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's an easy cleanup on that one.
Sorry about that, Eric, are you good? All right, now Mike, street plan update.
Yes, so two weeks ago, we received our updated marijuana excise tax for the year. It was $350,000, just a hair under $350,000, which was what we budgeted for this year, so when I, when I received that information, I went back and looked at our plan and looked at where we could, where we could, where we could, if we could move projects around and so forth, and looked at that. So what I, what I ended up doing was I created a financial model that goes out eight years. It's a very, it's a very conservative funding model, but I also took the, I took the estimates that we have currently and incorporated those into the funding model. And if you look, we're gonna be able, both the major and the local street funds, we're never gonna be in a deficit to do our streets, at least on paper, unless something unforeseen comes up that we don't know about. I think we have a very conservative and a plan that we can continue to move forward on. What I, what I also did was I took the, I took the projects that we're planning for this year and in the out-years. The good news is, I was able to move up Lori Gale from a 2030 project to a 2028 project. In addition, if you see in your packet, the two streets highlighted and were moved, that's Brook Street and James Street. As you recall, with Brook Street, we had a bridge issue that we couldn't do the, we couldn't do the construction project last year. So we are seeking grant funding through MDOT for the category B program to seek funds for both Brook and James Street. If we receive grants for any of those projects, we could move Lori Gale up a year, I believe. So we could actually possibly move that to a 27 project. I like, what I like to do, obviously, is I like to keep the streets kind of grouped when we do them, because then we get better pricing for, for construction. It's much easier for them to do a couple of streets right next to each other rather than do a street over on the east side of the city, and then go do a street over in Valley Vista. It just, it creates additional mobilization costs, so we try to, we try to be very, we try to be very conservative about that and think through that. So for the upcoming, for the upcoming year that we're gonna go into the summer, we're, as we already talked at the last meeting, we're gonna, we're gonna do Foreman. Our plan is this summer, we'll do Jackson, Front, Kent, and North, and Jefferson. And then we budgeted for Riverside and Elm. We will budget for that this year's fiscal, in that fiscal year budget. The plan would be to shoot those for spring of '26, because then we can have a proper time to engineer those and do what needs to be done at, on Riverside. And then in '26, '27, we would, we would extend, if we can, if we can get the funding, if we can get the funding for James, we can, we can move it to a '26 project. Otherwise, it would be a '27 project. In '28, we would do Beach Street, Hunt, Hunt Street, as of right now, Lori Gale. We'd also look at in '28 doing Birchwood. And then in '29, we would look at doing Elizabeth Dean, Carolyn. And then in 20, in 2030, unless we receive grant funding, because I did submit a grant through the county for all the cross streets between Hudson and Riverside, between Foreman and Elm, I have those budgeted for 2030. If we don't get the grant funding for that this year, so I have those, I have those slated for five years out, and then we can start. But if you look at the map I gave you, in this map, there's a couple of streets that gotta be tweaked. There's a couple of things that are on here, there's a couple of things that gotta be modified. But if you look at this map, I would say a majority of these streets in our network are being touched. And there's also a number of streets that are out here that while they haven't been, they haven't been done since 2020, there's a few streets in here. For example, Jefferson was done in 2017. Fremont was done in 2017. There's a couple others that have been done in a recent enough time that at some point we probably have to do some maintenance to them, whether it's cracked ceiling or maybe even a surface, maybe a chip seal or a, or a, or a microseal. But we're really, in the last five years and in the next five years, we're gonna get a very large component of the street network completed. We won't get it all, but, you know, and obviously, we need more funds from, we need more funds. I mean, it all ties to dollars. I mean, it all ties to dollars. And I know the state has been talking about trying to find more ways to fund local roads. Same after twenty years, I'll believe it when I see it, but, but I know there, I know that is something of interest right now at state level to try and get something. So maybe, maybe we'll see, maybe we'll see some more additional funds, or maybe we can accelerate some of these streets even faster than what we have. So any questions?
I know when you first started, our PESA rating was really, really low. I don't know where we're at today with that. I mean, it was sad.
Yeah.
And I know we've definitely improved it. I don't know where the study is or.
Yeah.
Any more information of where we're going to get up to where we're at?
So we did do, yeah, I could, yeah, I could share that with you.
That'd be great.
I could share that. I should have brought that tonight, actually, but, but we did, we did a, we did a PESA study this summer. And you're seeing, I mean, you're starting to see, I think before it was like eighty-five percent of our roads were, were poor. I think it's like sixty-five, sixty percent now. And that was also, didn't take into account the projects we did last year. When we got the, when we, when we received the PESA report, it was all the, it was all the street projects we did up to twenty-three. I think, I think the last project we included was Grendel and Shepherd's, so it didn't take into account Washington, Monroe, all of the other, all of the others. So we tend to do those every, we have the option, ability to do them two, every two years, but we'd probably do them about every four, just because they are, it's still a ten thousand dollar expense. And I don't, I don't know if I want to spend ten thousand dollars every two years having a street study when I know, when I know what the streets are. But we, we, we did one, we did one this year, and you're seeing, you're seeing improvement.
You have to remember too, only sixty percent of your council was here when we did.
Sure.
PESA ratings before, so.
Right.
I think it'd be helpful for Mark and Eric to understand.
Sure.
How we set the plan and that it's not just what street our friends live on or whatever.
Right. And in the plan, when we did the plan originally, we tried to get it, we knew that for a number of years, like during this time period, we were gonna be doing a lot of stuff on the east side. That's why when we started, we started doing more stuff on the west side, and now we're trying to work our way back to the west side.
The problem is, when you do so well on streets, now the ones that aren't done are even worse to people. Because they're, you know, you're driving smooth down Monroe, and then you get over to Lori Gale or whatever, and now your power will seem like sinkholes.
Right. And, and we've always said, no matter where we go with this, in someone's eyes, we're wrong.
What are the idea that you're talking about bunching stuff up?
Right.
In areas, because then we get better prices. Because I remember you, last, earlier, you had a, hey, we do this, we got money for this because they're giving us a better break.
Yeah.
I like that idea.
Right.
And it allows us to do more connector roads that way too.
Right.
As opposed to going back and patching them.
Right. And, and the nice thing is, at least with what we've done to this point, is there's a number of streets that we've done, we would have never, we're never even in the plan.
Yeah.
We've knocked, I mean, there's a lot of size reasons. I honestly, even I'm shocked we were able to be able to do them. So that could still come up too. I mean, we, we play a guessing game every year with the marijuana excise tax. They don't tell us, they don't project it to us like they do for Act Fifty-One or for state revenue sharing. So I have a, I have a very good gauge on this. This is all, honestly, this is gas, and it's very, like, I'm very conservative for a reason.
I have another question.
Sure.
About the marijuana stuff.
Yep.
If the governor does tax additional taxing on that, and more places close, it's all based on licenses for the city, is there ever going to be a time when the state will say, okay, you're generating X amount of dollars, and we'll base it on that instead of the licensing?
I don't believe so, because the constitutional requirement is, is that the, the excise tax for, for the municipalities is based on the number of facilities. What may happen, what they do, how the state pays us, is they pay us per facility. My guess, my guess, what you're actually seeing now, you're seeing, you're starting to see the market contrast. So the market's correcting itself. But you're also seeing incrementally every year that amount per facility, it's going up. It's like, it goes up like three thousand dollars a year, which that doesn't mean much right now, but I think what's eventually gonna happen is all these cities, I mean, there's cities that have twenty marijuana facilities. They're probably not gonna have twenty marijuana facilities five years from now. They're probably gonna have maybe ten. And like us, we probably in a couple of years ago, for now, maybe we only have three or four. I think what's gonna happen is that, is the sales are gonna keep going up. More communities might get online, but they might only have one facility rather than eight. I know, I noticed a couple, I looked at some of the cities when I got the report, you're already, like, for example, Calcasas was supposed to be the city that was banking on this. Well, if you look at the number of facilities they had a couple of years ago compared to now, it's, it's, it's different for them. We've always been conservative with that, because I've always basically said, we're, we're basically working out. But we planned our street projects with a two hundred thousand, two hundred fifty thousand dollar amount to the excise tax rather than, you know, the years we got five hundred thousand. I've always, I've always made sure we've kept it very low, because I would rather get more money than less money. Thank you. That is your question.
All right, everybody good on that?
I would like to say I appreciate you trying to move Lori Gale up. I have no connection with that street at all, except I drove through all Valley Vista, and that one, as you said, it really is in bad shape. There are others that are in, equally in bad shape. Marty mentioned a few that today on the phone. So thank you for continuing to try to move these up, and I know it's a difficult juggling.
But at the end of the day, we gotta be proud of what we're doing. There's communities out there, their roads are literally falling apart, and they have no way of doing it. When we set out to do this, I think it was a ten-year plan.
Did you start it at ten years?
And we've been diligently trying to get them all done, but it all takes dollars. So, but at the end of the day, if you look at this, right, there's a lot of stuff done, and we're, we're in much better shape than a lot of communities around us.
All right, everybody good on that? Eric, how about some board and commission reports?
I'm like, my meetings have all been coming up this week, but I do, we did have a nice coffee with council this past Monday, so I guess that's not quite a board and commission report, so I'll defer.
Jim?
Um, I have really nothing this week. Next week is an extremely busy week for, for mine. But I, I will say something about coffee with council. I'd like to see it a little bit where people attended it. I mean, four people, even though that, that's more we've had, I'd like to see that go if we're gonna continue to continue. And there's some good conversations there. But again, what we're doing, next month will be the twenty-fourth of, or this month, where in March will be the twenty-fourth again, so once that, we'll be reevaluating if we're gonna continue or how that goes. I'll be talking to the board members here, and we'll go from there.
Use it or lose it. Okay, Mark?
I attended the parks meeting, and we went over different things for the budget. And then we had, they approved an Arbor Board to plant a tree at Creekside, a Rotary Club that was, been recognized for that. They want to get a possible native tree. There was an Eagle Scout project. A man brought up making a sign at the scout camp for directions and lost and found baskets and bat cages, or bat containers, because he said those are falling apart. And that got approved, so that's gonna go. And, well, about it.
Yeah, all right.
I have planning commission next Monday, but I will be attending Lou Bender. It's one of our classes that we attend to try to be better than what we are. So we'll be there, so I will not be attending.
Yep. Friends of the Flat was here earlier or before. I know it's not a city board of commission, but I sit on it. So they are sending out documents for people to sign that says they have the right to, property owners on the river, documents for them to sign that says they have the right to spray. And then we talked about the treatments for the summer. A little bit of a fundraising strategy, so there's money in it going forward. And then just some events. We'll be attending Expo, Pride, River Triathlon, Concert Series, Community Cleanup if that still exists, and River Walk, stuff like that. So it was a pretty good meeting. Eric and I had to leave early to come here, but we got through most of the agenda items. Mike, how about managers' reports?
Sure. Couple of items. As I mentioned, we did submit a grant request for Riverside Drive, for, well, Riverside Drive and Cross Streets, as I mentioned, between Foreman and Elm, to try and get all of those streets funded through the county. I should probably hear something about that probably in June, I'm assuming, for that. I'm in the process right now of submitting a congressional designated spending request for the water treatment facility. And so I have until March seventeenth to do that, so I'm working on that. The wage and sick leave laws, if you all heard on the news, about a week and a half ago, at eleven PM, the, the state made some modifications to the wage and sick leave laws. We had already put a policy in place, ready to begin for that Friday, and so we were, we were ready to go. And with the changes to the law, there's just minor things that we have to adjust on basis of what we're gonna do with our part-time seasonal employees. That hasn't changed. How we're handling sick time hasn't changed. Just when you talk, when you talk to the labor attorney, it's just minor things. So we're, we're, I'm gonna be working on tweaking that. And then also, as I mentioned, Lou Bender will be here next Monday. He'll be doing the, the, the character analysis reports as part of, or, as part of that, of that, so.
Personality profile?
That's what it's called.
Setting us up to fail already.
Whatever you call it, but yeah. From what Lou, I've done them before. They're actually, they're actually really good, because it kind of gives everyone an idea of what, how, what people's personalities are. It gives a really good interpretation. It helps us with.
It's crazy, because you don't think it's gonna work, and then he starts reading off the results, and it sounds exactly like you.
Right.
So that's a cool thing.
That's all I have.
All right, any questions for Mike? Appointments. Jody Horton for board review. I'm at a vacancy there. Any, did you want to object real quick?
No.
All right, then we'll appoint Jody to board review. Jim will object, so you got, you got three yes votes. That's what you need. Perry Arbor Board? Okay. And then can you get with Tina and Andrew for Light Power and see if they want to continue and let me know? That should knock off those. I was gonna ask Roger at the chamber dinner, and I completely forgot, so I'll take care of the rest. But we'll reappoint Perry to Arbor Board. We'll appoint Jody to board review. And then when Perry lets me know about Tina and Andrew, hopefully, they both want to continue, because I think that Light Power Board, as it sits, is, is pretty great. So any objections, questions, comments, concerns? Okay, now, Mark, how about some council comments?
Well, like all of us, we're at coffee with council. I thought that went good. I mean, I'd still like to have some more people there, but we had some interesting conversation. And I think it, it went well. Everybody was conferring. I think it went pretty good. I'm just glad to be here.
Well, we're glad to have you. All right.
So we attended the Chamber of Commerce Dinner. Everybody that won an award truly did deserve it. Some really class act people won, and I'm gonna give Mr. Cam Doole a lot of credit. He cites that his new chef is the reason for the turnaround of Easy Street, and he allowed his chef to receive the award, which I thought was, you know.
Humble.
Humbling. The other one was Mr. Johnny Timson. And they read all of the things that Timson Transportation is helped with in the state, and John never shies away, will step up to the plate every single time. They even asked him to barge trucks over on the Mackinac Island so that they could do work out there, and John sent trucks. Very, very fitting for them to win their award, so. It was, it was really cool to attend. A lot of people showed up. I wish I had the pictures. They did, they did some cartoon pictures with Mr. Burns.
I'm, I'm happy. It made me forty miles later.
Hiding off at the side of the showboat, and he had a six-pack, and he was all ready. And it was.
Motivation.
Twenty. And then the other one was our illustrious mayor. You know he loves roundabouts, right? He just, he did one with Mike standing in the middle of a roundabout doing this.
Field of Nixon. I have those pictures. You'll never get them.
Are you sure I have? So it was good for everybody in attendance. Very well turned out. Our Chamber of Commerce, we got a sneak peek of the new logoing. I guess that's how you'd say it, right?
Marketing.
The city. Brand marketing. You have to go to Expo to see it. That's when she's gonna truly release it, but it is phenomenal. It fits this city and this community. And by community, I mean Lowell Township and Virgin's, us as a community. It fit perfectly. So I encourage everybody to attend Expo, just so Shannon can show off her fine work. Is that?
Yep. Jim?
Yeah, we did have a busy week Thursday night, Friday. We attended Chief Hurst's retirement party. Lot of tears, lot, lot of good conversation, good food, great turnout. So thanks, Chief Hurst. I'm off in the sunset now. I had heard this weekend, is it true, we turned our clocks back already?
Yes.
Forward, but forward.
This weekend.
Was that, this Sunday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I wasn't sure. I didn't believe it. It was that time of year already, so look forward to that extra hour Sunday. That's it.
Good, Eric?
I also attended some of these events and enjoyed it thoroughly. The chamber dinner was, was just a blast. I've enjoyed that very much. I would like to respond. Tyler, thank you for mentioning sidewalks. And I've talked about that a few times here. I know the police try to do what they can, but for me, as, as a walker and a bicycler, bicyclist through the winter, I use this road all the time. All you need to do is fill out that consumer form, and Jody, I mentioned that to you. It's worked very well for me. If there's, if there's a sidewalk that you'd like to use, just send it to the city, and it gets taken care of. So I just recommend that you do that. I know it's late in the season now, but the walkability, even in the winter, is important. And coffee with council, we had some good discussion on stop signs and how we better monitor our changes going forward as far as like traffic pattern diversions, monitoring before and after. That was a good discussion. And then we also talked about the city setting some long-term goals, and I think Lou Bender's gonna help us with that coming up shortly. So it was all good. Perry, thank you for having the guts to exercise your freedom of speech. Appreciate that. And Wendy, thank you for your efforts and Fromm's efforts to bring in this new community. Thank you.
All right, I'll start with Perry. Of all of your public comments, that one was probably my favorite. I respect very much the passion and.